Before we go to roll call, I'd like to add that for the record, Councilmembers Fimbras will be participating electronically through Microsoft Teams. Ms. Clerk, let's go to roll call.
Ms. Santa Cruz.
Absent excused.
Mr. Cunningham.
Here.
Mr. Dahl.
Here.
Mrs. Lee.
Absent excused.
Mr. Fimbras.
Mr. Fimbras.
I'm here. Present this.
Mr. Kazatchek.
Mayor Ramon.
Here.
Item two. Invocation, pledge of allegiance, and appointments to boards, committees, and commissions. The invocation will be given by Jaclyn Lon Peters of Eagles Wings of Grace. After the invocation, I ask that you remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
May we all bow our heads. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for your guidance and direction. May you give wisdom to our elected officials. We are grateful for all the blessings you have given to our community. We pray for peace for all. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Thank you, Ms. Lon Peters, for gracing us with your presence. Item two C.
Appointments to boards, commissions, and committees.
All righty, do we have any appointments to be made at this time?
We need a motion to approve the appointments of Bruce Hayes and William Burks to the Veterans Affairs Committee.
So moved.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? Motion carries. I would like to thank Mr. Bruce Hayes and William Burks for your willingness to serve our city in your appointments. Thank you so much. Item two C.
Presentations.
I have a proclamation to read into the record proclaiming October 6th, 2023 to be National Manufacturing Day. Here to accept the proclamation are Tom Howard, Sergeant Aerospace, and Kristen Bidgood of the Pima County One Stop. Can you join me up front? Oh, and our very own Barbara Coffey, our Economic Initiatives Director is with us today. Okay. So I have a proclamation from the City of Tucson, Arizona, from the Office of the Mayor. Whereas National Manufacturing Day is a flagship initiative of the Manufacturing Institute, the 501(c)(3) nonprofit workforce development and education partner of the National Association of Manufacturers. And whereas Manufacturing Day provides students, parents, teachers, and community leaders a chance to step inside companies, educational facilities, and more to see promising career opportunities in modern manufacturing. And whereas manufacturing is an important part of Tucson's economy, generating 14.3% of gross domestic product in 2021, which was slightly higher than the nation's. And whereas the average Tucson manufacturing wage is $101,239 in 2022, which was $21,592 above the national average. Whereas manufacturers in Tucson produce transportation equipment, which includes aerospace and defense, computer and electronic products, fabricated metal products, machinery, food, and more. Whereas the City of Tucson Office of Economic Initiatives in Pima County will host a Manufacturing Day event on October 23rd showcasing local manufacturing facilities in the Pima Community College Downtown Campus Center of Excellence in Applied Technology. Now therefore, I, Regina Romero, Mayor of the City of Tucson, Arizona, do hereby proclaim October 6th, 2023 to be National Manufacturing Day in this community and encourage all residents to celebrate our local manufacturers and what they contribute to our lives and to our economy. In witness whereof, I have here on two, set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Tucson, Arizona, to be affixed this third day of October, 2023. Congratulations. Really appreciate your work. Would you like to say something?
I would, and I want to introduce Jaclyn Vega on our team. So again, Jaclyn Vega handles our business retention efforts, works with our manufacturers every day. So I'd like to have her recognize the partners that are here today.
Thank you very much. Mayor, we want to thank you for this and for all your support in regards to economic initiatives and workforce development. I also want to thank our partners present here, Pima County, Sergeant Aerospace, and Sun Corridor, as well as our SAMP members that have been helping planning Manufacturing Day. And we are very excited to be hosting Manufacturing Day on October 23rd and touring students from Flowing Wells High School into ITDE and our amazing facilities at Pima Community College. Thank you.
Item three. Mayor and Council report summary of current events. City Manager's Communication Number 302 dated October 3rd is received into and made part of the record. This time has been scheduled to allow members of the mayor and council to report on current events. These are to be current event activities within the community, not position statements on policy issues. Does any council member have anything to report at this time?
I do, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Fimbras, and then we'll start out at the deus.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, I wish to wish our colleague Ward 1 Councilmember to attend to the complete speed of her coming from her surgery. Also, Siyasi High School and Deweyview High School hold the number one and number three spots in the nation for advocates who are meant to study the University of Arizona. Over 193 student high school seniors and over 119 Deweyview High School seniors see the former candidates of the United University, UVA, come Wildcats. Gratitude to the seniors, their families, friends, teachers, and all of this. Siyasi School District Education is the key to success. He's cooked out and helped our community raise or reach our goal. Word five in United Health Hearts of Arizona are hosting a sock drive. We're asking for the folks to donate new and unused socks to kindergarten to fifth grade kids. The Warren Fair Council is located at Fort Worth South Park Avenue to drop off site. For any questions, please call 791-4231. That's for Mary Lepita Robles. Give her support. You're a good cop. Your donation is greatly appreciated. On Saturday, Sunday, March 5th, sends us a serve or serving our great country. In the military will be recognized at the 23 Veterans Tribute lunch in the DC Club if you want something to learn. We hope my colleagues on the council and you, Madam Mayor, will come and say your words. You may even thanks these people for the service commitment for more for your call. This call, Word 5, Council, I'm sending 14231. Mark Kerr or Lepita Robles are recording the event. So I got, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Cunningham.
So I'm not going to do a bunch of announcements tonight. I've got one. I wanted to acknowledge the passing of John C. Scott, longtime political informer here in Tucson. He had a radio show for a number of years. I think just about every single person who served in the public appeared on his show, believe it or not. I appeared on his show. That was the first time I ever gave a live radio interview in the year 2000. I gave an interview on behalf of my father, who was running for office at the time. More importantly, I think there was a period, there was a week back sometime in 2014 where he interviewed my dad, my grandma, and me in the same week. So John C. Scott also played on the same basketball team in the legislature as my dad back in the 70s. So he was an amazing guy. He was funny and witty. He had a great show. And he did a great job for Tucson for a long time. I remember all of his shows he did. A deal to Austin's. So I just wanted to acknowledge and acknowledge his passing and thank him for all the things he did for Tucson.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Dahl.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A quick suggestion. It's getting cool now outside, so it's time to plant trees. Not cut them down, to plant trees. Trees for Tucson is doing a tree planting every Saturday morning in October in Ward 3. Check out Trees for Tucson website to find out where we'll be planting trees. And maybe I'll see you at one of those tree planting events. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dahl. And we did an awesome tree planting this weekend at Barrio Anita. So it was fun. Councilmember or Vice Mayor Kazatchek.
Just real quickly following up on Paul's. There's a memorial service for John Scott being planned for the Loft Theater. The date to be determined, but it's coming soon.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Did you want to add something, Councilmember? Okay. So with me, I just wanted to invite our community to join the mayor's office. Mr. Carwash, Ward 1 Councilmember Lynn Santa Cruz, the Rose Neighborhood Association in Tucson Clean and Beautiful to celebrate the transformation of Lamarck Park. This Saturday morning, October 7th, from 8:30 to 10:30 a.m., as part of our Tucson Million Trees program, we are planting desert-adapted trees and transforming Lamarck Park from an empty lot to a restored site with green infrastructure and community gathering features, thanks to a $150,000 donation to the Tucson Million Trees Initiative by Mr. Carwash. Also, next Monday, we will be celebrating Indigenous Peoples' Day, a time to recognize the sovereignty and resilience of indigenous peoples. The City of Tucson is located on the traditional lands that have been stewarded by the Tojono'otan People since time immemorial and the Pasquayaki People, who have lived in the Sonoran Desert for thousands of years. It is so important that we recognize the contributions of Native American people everywhere, understand the critical issues that impact their lives, and celebrate the ways indigenous people are building thriving futures in vibrant communities. And one last reminder. You have one week to register to vote. The deadline is quickly approaching. If you are not registered to vote, I would encourage you to do so on or before October 10th. Please look into the mvd.gov or in-person post offices have voter registration cards, as well as the recorder's office has voter registration. So please register on or before October 10th. With that, we don't have any more on this side. We move on to item four.
City Manager's Report Summary of Current Events.
City Manager's Communication Number 303 dated October 3rd is received into and made part of the record. This time has been scheduled to allow the city manager to report on current events. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. No report today.
Thank you. Item five.
Liquor License Applications Report from City Manager.
City Manager's Communication Number 317 dated October 3rd is received into and made part of the record. Ms. Clerk, please read the liquor license agenda.
Your Honor, on this evening's agenda, we have one request for a new license for person or location transfers and eight special events. All are in compliance with city requirements, except for 5B 3 Cathedral Corner in Ward 1. An appropriate motion would be to forward items 5B 1 and 2 and 5B 4 and 5, 5C 1 through 8 to the State Liquor Board with a recommendation of approval.
There is a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
So we need to consider item 5B 3 separately. It's Cathedral Corner in Ward 1, and it's been shown as not in compliance with city requirements.
Mr. Rankin.
Honorable Mayor, Members of the Council. In this particular instance, the application has a recommendation for disapproval or a finding of noncompliance by a Planning and Development Services Department. Because the applicant has not submitted any application for permits or the required development plans for the property, the information was that the applicant was going to withdraw this application for the liquor license, but we never got the withdrawal either. So I do think it would, and I understand that Councilmember Santa Cruz is not here in her ward, but I do believe an appropriate motion based on the noncompliance with all zoning and permitting requirements would be a recommendation for denial.
So moved, Your Honor.
There is a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any against? Motion carries. Item six.
Call to the audience.
At this time, the public is allowed to address the mayor and council on any issue, except for items scheduled for a public hearing at this meeting. Please make sure you have read the information on the back of the speaker card before making your presentation. Speakers are limited to three-minute presentations, and call to the audience is scheduled to last for no more than 30 minutes. Pursuant to the Arizona Open Meeting law, individual council members may ask the city manager to review the matter, ask the matter be placed on a future agenda, or respond to criticism made by speakers. However, the mayor and council may not discuss or take legal action on matters raised during call to the audience. Do we have any cards at this time?
Yes, Your Honor.
All righty, our first speaker is Gisela Aaron. Gisela Aaron.
Hello. I, Gisela Aaron, come to you, Swishuri, in this court of record. Per the writers of the U.S. Constitution, we, the people, are to frequently remind you of your oath of office, of your duties, and call you out on neglect. I have warned you frequently and out of necessity about your continued reliance on federal grants. When you accept federal grants, there are always strings attached. You are voluntarily abandoning. You are surrendering local jurisdiction for federal controls and laws. You have betrayed us. You have sold us out to bankrupt America, to overthrow the USA for foreign control, such as the United Nations, the World Health Organization, the One World Order, the Bilderberg Group, the pharma-industrial complex that profited from the pandemic, as well as the unscientific climate hysterics. We suffer tremendously because you have not done your most basic research. Why are we overrun at the border? Who is funding this? Why was there a pandemic? In 2003, we had coronavirus incidents, and we survived it. People have immunity even 20 years later. As early as April 2020, doctors and scientists successfully healed patients with repurposed medicines in alleviating coronavirus. Yet they were censored, blacklisted, and their medical licenses suspended. In a real pandemic, one would use all available treatments possible. One would focus on protecting the vulnerable and the elderly, and they would stay home while the rest of the people would go about their daily lives. Eventually would reach herd immunity. Unscientific masking made no difference. I say the lockdown intentionally crashed the economy to affect the election in 2020. Have you considered the illegal border crosses often bring sickness, tuberculosis, variations of coronavirus, measles, Ebola, Marburg, and other diseases? You are endangering us. You are aiding and abetting our enemies, the Mexican cartels and China, with human trafficking, fentanyl distribution. You are aiding and abetting them so they can freely devote themselves to drug distribution and killing of 100,000 Americans a year. You have been warned. This is treason, and I accuse you of treason. May God have mercy on you.
Loon Menuke, I believe it is. Loon.
Luke Menke. Hello.
Menke. I'm sorry about that. And then just introduce yourself and if you live in the city and if you are a retained speaker.
My name is Luke Menke. I do live in the city, basically, my whole life. I am not a retained speaker. I took the initiative to watch the study session streamed on YouTube, where a complete timeline was laid out on the Ocatillo Apartments incident. You all spoke very vehemently about the extensive coalition that was brought together to address the issues at Ocatillo. But at no point in that session was it addressed whether, through all of this, a cost analysis was done of displacing the vulnerable individuals at Ocatillo compared to just paying the bill and bringing in agencies to get them the services that they needed. Moving these people who had adequate shelter at the time of the eviction order into emergency shelters, something the City of Tucson admits to not having enough of, is displacing and harming a vulnerable group of people that you all claim to want to help. It was also discussed that any confusion surrounding the city's response could have been clarified by any community orgs reaching out to varying city resources. But community orgs shouldn't have to reach out to the city. These groups are not unknown to you. The city should be more than capable of folding these community orgs into your plans, bringing in these groups of individuals who have shown time and again that they can organize, accrue resources, and have the citizens, the poor, and the vulnerable's best interests in heart. This is especially so once their presence was known at Ocatillo. In the study session, reports of vandalism were brought up, creating a code violating unsafe environment for the residents. Reports of vandalism onsite targeting key safety, fire safety, and electrical infrastructure was deeply suspicious. At all times, there were individuals watching the property, whether that was the residents, the organizations onsite, city and grassroots, or TPD and security. There was no reason or space for that kind of vandalism, except to encourage the displacement of residents. The "vandalism" of fuses and electrical infrastructure is especially suspect because most apartments will have these locked away. I think it would be reasonable to call for an evaluation of the efficacy of the reports from TPD and the city appointed groups who responded at Ocatillo. Emergency shelters are not an adequate solution when the individuals were already in shelter. I believe that it would have been more than cost-effective to address them where they were instead of moving them into unknown, unsafe environments. Thank you.
Robert Royce. Robert Royce. Robert Royce. Robert Royce.
I'm Robert Royce. I've been living in di ferticulosis londia for the last three days, and I'm not into pain, but I did manage to make the board of supervisors' meeting this morning, and actually got some laughs for the first time ever at a Tucson public meeting presentation. Uh, I have two things on my mind today. Last week, we discovered that we're getting $5 million federal grant, borrowed money added to the national debt to plant trees. But, in the same week, I discovered that one of our, some members of one of our neighborhood's associations took it upon themselves to contract for the removal of 75 trees on public property. So the reality is, we have no tree ordinance. You got no right to borrow, to take $5 million in borrowed money to plant trees, when any single member of the public can go onto public land and destroy trees that were lovingly planted by citizens on public land in, uh, with public money. We need a tree ordinance. If you're gonna be spending that $5 million, otherwise, please give it back. Number two, I have opposed every single attempt by this body to get a raise from the voters over the last 23 years, because I am most deeply disappointed with the fact that your number one priority is to absolve rich property owners in downtown and other parts of the city from their tax burden, and casually passing it on to everyone else, while shoveling away tens of millions of dollars in city money to the rich, privileged insider people in this city. But, $24,000 a year is not enough for city council member. We need a professional, full-time city council, where people don't have to go out and work a full-time job to support their families. And so I will, I'm asking everyone who's ever seen any of my city council presentations, 360 of them, 187 episodes of the new city government for Tucson, uh, 43 episodes of Thomas Jefferson Still Lives, and Access Tucson, uh, well over 100 board of supervisors meetings, and numerous thousands of petitions that I've collected from the voters in this city for my various projects, including my candidacy for city council. Please vote yes on a reasonable raise for this council and mayor, so we can have a full-time city council and mayor, and they won't have to go out and work full-time elsewhere to support their families. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Fawn Hepper, I believe it is. Fawn Hepper.
Hi, my name's Fawn Hepper. I'm one of the tenants that used to live at Ocatillo. When I moved in there, it was unlivable then. I paid rent to live there, to be thrown out, because he couldn't afford to pay his bills, but all his tenants had to pay our bills to him. What made it right for him to throw everybody out, or the city? You don't pay our bills, we pay yours. So I think it's time that you straighten up and get the homeless housing that you were sent the money to put in housing. Do your job, or don't have a
Alright, uh, good evening, mayor and council. My name is Peter Norquist. I'm a resident of Tucson, Ward 3. And today, I'd like to speak on the stakeholder conversation, which was held the week before last. First, I wish to comment on the technique that was used, something called the Delphi method, which was developed by the Rand Corporation, and is designed to elicit predetermined responses, which provide the illusion of consensus. The main points being, first, that it is designed to prevent discussion or debate outside of precept parameters, and then provide a circumscribed set of choices. So, for example, you could offer people a question about kinds of pizza that they like, and the choices could be Canadian bacon, sausage, or pepperoni pizza. And I would have to choose one of those three, and they would be projected on a screen. But what if I like vegetarian pizza, or cheese pizza? Those are not options. So by definition, they will not be included in the results. So the consensus that is derived from a Delphi technique is therefore an illusion. I also wish to comment on a couple of statements which Ms. Romero made during her introductory remarks. First, I agree that keeping an open mind is indeed important. In today's asymmetrical news environment, those with views which differ from those pushed by the corporate media have no choice but to consider contrary views. However, the same can't necessarily be said for those who hold the quote-unquote mainstream view. It was stated that the science on climate change is settled. Indeed, the corporate media and political elite are constantly demanding that the public complies with their green agenda, by arguing that the science is settled on global warming. The official narrative insists that there is a nearly 99% consensus amongst scientists that the human race is causing a catastrophic climate emergency through carbon emissions. However, at the end of 2022, an important survey revealed that 41% of climate scientists dispute these claims. The survey was conducted in September and October by Fairleigh Dickinson University in Teaneck, New Jersey. Researchers collected a representative sample of scientists with at least a bachelor's degree in fields such as meteorology, climatology, physics, geology, and hydrology. About 57 of the scientists who participated were members of the American Meteorology Society. To date, more than 1,800 scientists and scholars have signed a document declaring climate science is based more on personal beliefs and political agendas than sound, rigorous science. The World Climate Declaration states climate science should be less political, while climate policies should be more scientific. I would encourage anyone viewing to check out these websites: co2coalition.org, naturalclimatechange.org, clintel.org, and whatsupwiththat.com, spelled W-A-T-T-S.
I'm to conclusion, Mr. Norquist.
That I, I am at a conclusion, and I appreciate your time this evening. Thank you.
My name is Pendleton Spicer. Good evening to all of you. Um, I am a resident of Tucson, and I'm not a paid speaker. But I am reading a letter originally written by my brother Barry Spicer and his wife Colleen Sackheim, and this letter is in your inbox at this moment. I've made some changes to the original to fit it into three minutes, which it won't do. Um, and I want to say that I agree with what I'm about to read. I also want to ask, is government really serving us with this situation? And can government continue to serve us, or are we, what do we need to do to change our government? We are writing to you as longtime residents of the Fort Lowell Historic District, a place that holds a special spot in each of our lives for the last 40 to 80 years, respectively, and within the Tucson community. Over 45 years ago, our parents, noted anthropologist Roz and Ned Spicer, and preservationist Peggy and Ben Sackheim, along with others, worked to create the historic preservation zones that have protected our city's iconic neighborhoods, including the old Fort Lowell neighborhood, for almost half a century. For decades, the Spicers and Sackhams worked to ensure that development within the Fort Lowell Historic Preservation Zone blended into the existing cultural and natural environment by following the city historic preservation code, zoning code. Today, major issues and failures from the city preservation program are threatening Fort Lowell. Historic sites are being destroyed. For example, a few weeks ago, neighbors urgently contacted the City of Tucson Preservation Office to ask for a stop-work order on unpermitted and unreviewed site work at an East Fort Lowell Road location. The City Preservation Office did not act, and later that day, earth-moving equipment destroyed parts of the listed Fort Lowell Schoolhouse Adobe ruins at that site. Also, part of a historic building at Fort Lowell Park that was restored with taxpayer bond money has been allowed to collapse. Several current historic, um, HPC cases before the Fort Lowell Historic Zone Advisory Board threaten to erode the sensibility of the old Fort Lowell neighborhood. Inappropriate new standards may be being set that, over time, will erode what has and continues to make this neighborhood so special. These cases are out of character of this historic zone. There seems to be inaccurate and misguided responses from the Preservation Office, which at best suggest an apparent lack of understanding of the importance of the issues, or at worst, are formulated to undermine the intent of the preservation zone. These responses are making the Unified Development Code useless, and are resulting in the destruction of our community's sense of tradition, history, and place. We believe that this approach to loosen...
You can come to a conclusion, Ms. Spicer.
Well, what I'll say is that this is in your inbox. You can read the rest of it. But we are asking that you, um, do an assessment of the City Preservation Office, because they are not doing their job as far as our neighborhood is concerned. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Drew Fellows. Drew Fellows.
Hello, mayor and council. My name is Drew Fellows. I am a resident of Tucson, and I live in Ward 6. I am not a paid speaker. Um, I'm also a member of the Party for Socialism Liberation, and a paralegal that represents dozens of the Ocatillo tenants. Um, why are we here today? So, over 200 tenants were victims of fraud, plain and simple. They were homeless before, seeking to better their lives by seeking to receive sobriety care from trained professionals, who were there to help get their lives back on track, um, as society tells them to do. But these people are deserving of homes regardless. And because we live under a capitalist regime where housing is a commodity and not a human right, people are forced to live on the streets now. So what happened? Ocatillo management left the conditions in squalor. They refused medical treatment, sobriety care treatment, which they were obligated to give according to their access contract. They were given two meals a day, just two, a bowl of cereal, and a slice of pizza, and that's it. And even code enforcement from the city of Tucson was there on March 16th and gave them their first citation. So my question to the city, generally, is why, on that time, at that date, did code enforcement not put two and two together and realize that these people are living in squalor? This is the fraud happening. What's going on? Why was there no further investigation? So how did the Ocatillo management respond? When mutual aid groups and the Party for Socialism Liberation first became aware of the issue, the city, we were harassed by armed private security. Um, I was detained. I was assaulted by armed private security. Um, many others were held at gunpoint while they were being evicted. And also, armed security was not allowing food on the premises, even though these people were starving, truly starving. And also, mind you, we were invited guests of the tenants as well. So we were allowed to be on the property by Arizona state law. And how did the city of Tucson respond? Uh, according to the study session notes earlier, I believe it was September 12th, when the city first became aware of this, at least you all in your offices. Um, but again, code enforcement was there starting back in March, and had continued contact with Ocatillo management. So why was there no, why was there no math happening, saying that these people were living in squalor, they need services that they are obligated to receive, but are not receiving? Um, and when the city did come a couple weeks ago, they were given some pamphlets and some phone numbers to call, and people are calling all day, on hold all day, and not receiving services. They are not getting the housing that they deserve. And, uh, to top everything off, they were forcefully evicted, uh, last Friday, when the city condemned the building, finally, after management sabotaged the building, cut all the electrical panels, glued the breaker boxes shut, vandalized the fire alarms, according to residents, and TPD came out and forced to kick people out. Um, and allegedly Happy Times, the same company, has 15 other properties in town. So to conclude, my point to y'all is the demands that are being made by tenants: immediate housing for all former tenants of the Ocatillo, an immediate investigation into Happy Times, uh, for their cruel treatment they've given to Ocatillo residents, healthcare from relevant government offices for those tenants of Ocatillo who were caught in the building fire and the fallout from that, and lastly, the prosecution and fining of the fraudsters who scammed access out of millions of dollars. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Fellows. There was an, earlier in the day, there was a study session agenda item to clarify the timeline of what had happened, and what, uh, the city of Tucson has done, and is continuing to do in this particular unfortunate... You cannot interrupt, or I will have you kicked out. You cannot interrupt. So, Mr. Ortega, Mr. Ortega, can you please, uh, clarify, uh, the steps taken, and what, uh, the city of Tucson is still
Sure, Mayor. Um, hesitant to get into too much detail, only because it's not on the agenda for this meeting, but what I would suggest is two things. One, that discussion was recorded, and folks can listen to that. It started about 2:05, and folks are welcome to listen to that. Also, I do have a memorandum that was put forth, basically outlining what was read, uh, that has been shared with mayor and council, and happy to share that with any and all that are interested. Be happy to do that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Georgetta K- K- Kurnig? I believe Georgetta Kurnig. Georgetta Kurnig.
Hi, I'm Georgetta Kurnig, and I'm a resident of Tucson, Arizona, and I'm also a former tenant of Ocatillo. My husband and I have been there since March. Um, we went there, um, because we became homeless because of COVID, and we were in the ELS program, the rapid rehousing. Our paperwork got lost, swept on the rug, so we lived in a tent for a while, and we said, you know what? There's a program, let's go to it. We were promised housing, we were promised substance abuse, we were promised, um, behavioral health, everything we were promised. Um, got a room, it was nice for a while. We lived on a little, uh, it was like the outdoor mat on a piece of plywood. Other than that, um, things went by. You know, we were fed for a little while. Well, conditions got worse. More and more people, about, I'd say about 250 people were at that place at one time. Um, then they brought in the armed guards. They would carry AR-15s everywhere. Um, they'd pretty much want to kick out anybody they wanted to. Um, we stayed in our room, you know, we kept to ourselves, we stayed in our room. But then all of a sudden, um, these programmers would, um, basically set up trap houses, trap rooms, so they kept drugs flowing in this place. People are trying to get well, they're making it worse. Um, also, they, um, they were just, um, they were favoritizing some people. Some people got moved to a house, they're favorites, they're still there, you know, as we starved. They got fed. Um, my thing is, is we suffered for almost nine months. We called, we tried, and I talked to somebody from the city. They said, well, it's the state's fault, okay? Access is from the state. They fed off our access. Why can't we get help from the state? If the city can't do anything, let's go after the state. We suffered. There's so many people right now living out in tents, suffering with no running water, no electric, nothing to eat. And there are also members from Ocatillo. We have nothing. We were promised housing. A lot of us wanted to work, we were told, don't work, do not work. A lot of us wanted to clean, but they had, they didn't even know how to get us clean. They just kept us under, and we couldn't reach out to anyone. Now that we finally got to reach out, where's our help? We just want to know, we want a better life, where's our help? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kurnig. And, Ms. Kurnig, I, I want to make sure that we have your contact information, Ms. Kurnig? Uh, I want to make sure that we have your contact information, and anyone else here that was at Ocatillo that needs assistance and services, make sure that, um, you approach our clerk's office staff, so that we can help. Okay? Um, I think it's Ally. Ally?
Hi, my name is Ally Hodge, and, um, I'm gonna make this very brief. Um, my friends that I'm here with today are part of the group of Ocatillo residents that are homeless. I was also one of them. Um, we are very fortunate to have each other right now, because that's all we have. So, I just want to recognize my friend James Brown. He's a 71-year-old veteran, who's out on the streets, and now in a homeless shelter. That's about as far as he's gotten. My friend Chris Olivera, who helps feed me every day, take care of me, and my best friend Gabe Chavez. Gabriel, right now, is taking care of the camp of homeless people on the side of the road that got bulldozed. road that got bulldozed today when all of their possessions were taken. They were harassed three times by the police last night and have been threatened to be arrested every day since Friday, and we're living on the side of the road. I don't know why we're not important, but it was because of him that I ate today. Thank you.
James Brown? James Brown?
My name is James Brown. I'm a resident of Tucson, and I'm a client, ex-client of the Ocotillo Hotel. I'm an ex-counselor with Amity Foundation, seven years on the east side. And I would like to start off by asking all of the Ocotillo residents, if you take your day's certificate of accomplishments while you're in this courtroom room, do you have a certificate of accomplishment? Not a one? Dang. That's crazy. Well, I'm going to put a different spin on it. It's been found in our mind that today we've got it made. It's been said our goals are reached and that we're being equally paid. They're saying Tucson is our home, now that it's all been liberated. They say even the darkest of my people now are being appreciated. But there's a certain stipulation, Mayor, for sharing in all those millions. We've been told we got to forget about the future of our million. So it's all been just a brainwash, another you-know-who disguise, and it takes place this very moment, right before our very eyes. You look around, you see our neighborhoods, they're turning into slums, and yet right up on that hill, you guys are building condominiums, while the drugs in our sector are holding the poor people at ease as our families are being led with food stamps and welfare cheese. And yet there's some of us today looking forward to a truth, saying, forget about all those hangings and drugs and all the drug abuse. But how can we really ever forget those beaten scars and lies and when they auctioned off my people right before your very eyes? We need to get ourselves together and finally get it through our head that this is never going to be the poor people's homestead, and we better watch our backs so that we don't be so surprised to see the rain of death again over the poor people's horizon. Thank you very much. So.
Mr. Brown? Mr. Brown? I just want to make sure that you provide your information as well. We want to make sure that you, that the City of Tucson provides you the information on the services provided to the people that were living at Ocotillo. Christopher Olivera? Christopher Olivera?
My name's Christopher Olivera. I'm also a resident at Ocotillo. And, you know, I came to speak on, you know, behalf of my peers. I don't know about them, but for myself, I'm getting sick and tired of being promised stuff by y'all that are elected to be our officials and run our governments, just to be told that I'm not good enough to have it and just to be tossed out like a piece of trash when I'm not. Because, believe me, believe me, all of us right here that you see in front of you are probably some of the brightest, the smartest people you'll ever meet in your life. You know that? And just because we're a product of our community, that don't mean nothing. That don't mean a goddamn thing. Because just as you give police the rights to patrol the streets and do what they do, sitting there on my balcony at the Ocotillo, the whole time I was there was a fucking joke, straight up. Hey, I ain't going to bullshit, excuse my language, but I'm being truthful about it, and that's the way I speak, right? It was like, hey, straight up, like watching the episode of Cops Live on location every night. They ain't got nothing better to do than sit there and harass us about, you know, when we're there trying to better ourselves. You know, I mean, granted, you know, that we're people doing whatever, you know, behind closed doors and shit, but, you know, we came in willingly to want to change our lives. And what was going on behind closed doors, you know, that's pretty messed up, you know, like, he's going to do what she did to us, like, you know? That's not right at all. I mean, come on, ask yourself straight up, what would Jesus do? What the fuck would Jesus do? I'm tired from him. I'm not going to be like Jesus, continue to turn the other cheek. I'm tired. I'm sick and tired. That's why I went to, you know, to go get help, because I'm sick and tired of being sick and tired.
That was our last speaker. That was our last speaker. Thank you all for attending. I will save the additional speakers to the next meeting on October seventeenth. Item seven.
Consent agenda items A through K.
Reports from the city manager on consent agenda are received into and made part of the record.
Want me to stay around?
Ms. Clerk, you are requested to read the consent agenda.
Your Honor, on this evening's consent agenda, item A is approval of minutes. Item B is approval of an intergovernmental agreement between the Arizona Healthcare Cost Containment System Administration access and the City of Tucson City to allow the city to provide funding to secure federal funds for supplemental payments for the access to the Professional Service Initiative, APSI, at Tucson Medical Center, TMC, for the period of October first, twenty twenty-three through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Item C is a subrecipient agreement amendment with Pima County regarding the Federal Emergency Management Agency FEMA Emergency Food and Shelter Program. Item D is Tucson Police Acceptance of Award of Fiscal Year Twenty-Three Funding for the Bureau of Justice Assistance Formula DNA Capacity Enhancement for Backlog Reduction Program Award. Item E is the Tucson Police Acceptance of an Award for Fiscal Year Twenty-Three Funding for the Bureau of Justice Assistance Local Law Enforcement Crime Gun Intelligence Center Integration Initiative. Item F is Housing and Community Development, approving the Affordable Housing Impact Fees subsidy requests for Sleepy Hollow Estates Impact Fees subsidy requests. Item G is Real Property, RES 2020-103A, proposed vacation and sale of Eleventh Avenue right-of-way between Helen Street and Mabel Street to Pima Community College. Item H is an intergovernmental agreement with the Arizona Department of Transportation for funding appropriation for the Drexel Road Bridge. Item Y is an intergovernmental agreement between the Arizona Superior Court in Pima County, Pima County Consolidated Justice Court, and the City of Tucson for the provision of twice-a-day initial appearances. Item J is the Tucson Code amending section fourteen dash five of the Tucson Code to provide for the recognition of a successor labor organization without requiring an election. Item K is an ordinance amending ordinance one-two-zero-four-one regarding the compensation of city magistrates effective October eighth, twenty twenty-three.
Have a motion, please?
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Any discussion on this item? Hearing none. Let's go to roll call.
Mr. Kazachik? Mr. Dahl?
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham?
Aye.
Mr. Feimbris?
Aye.
Mayor Romero?
Aye.
Item eight.
Public hearing zoning TP MOD zero-seven-two-three dash zero-twenty, Claussen East Magdalena Road, SR to RX one in Ward two.
City Manager's Communication Number three oh six, dated October third, is received into and made part of the record. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a time and place legally advertised for a public hearing on the reactivation and time extension to complete the contingent's rezoning from SR to RX one for a site located on the northwest corner of Magdalena Road and South Brown Avenue, approximately one-quarter mile west of South Harrison. Staff recommends approval of the reactivation and time extension with change of condition from July tenth, twenty twenty-three to July tenth, twenty twenty-eight. Is the applicant or representative present?
...part owner of the property currently.
Mr. Minchin, are you agreeable to the proposed requirements?
In two thousand seventeen, it was my mother who started the rezoning, okay? She passed away two months prior to the approval.
Let's hear what Cunningham has to say.
Pardon me?
Go ahead. Go ahead, Mr. Minchin.
Okay. So, the, the family had some issues in and among themselves, and what came out of that is the, the five heirs decided to buy out three, get that taken care of, and continue on with my mother's wishes. So, so the answer is yes. Those conditions, which were imposed to get the zoning to RX one, is fine, and it's fine with the neighbors.
That's, that's, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure that you are agreeable with the conditions.
Absolutely.
This is a time extension, so you will have it an additional five years. But thank you so much, really appreciate it. The public hearing is scheduled to last for no more than one hour, and if you'd like to take a seat. I don't know if we have any speakers for this item. There are no speakers for this item, sir, so I believe we can close the public hearing.
Go move.
Second. Your Honor, I just want to make sure, is there anybody here to speak on this item?
All right. So there's a motion and a second to close the public hearing. If there are no other discussion, then all those in favor of closing the public hearing, signify by saying aye.
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 Any against? Motion carries. This public hearing is closed. What is the council's pleasure on this item? Councilmember Cunningham.
Your Honor, I'm familiar with this area, and the neighbors in question, and familiar with this lot. I think it's prudent for the city to grant the additional extension. I move we pass the item.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any against? Motion carries. Item nine.
Zoning TP ENT zero-zero-six-two-three-zero-two-eight, North Oracle Road C Two Marijuana Dispensary, Special Exception Land Use Ordinance Adoption, Ordinance Number one-two-zero-four-three. City Manager's Communication Number three oh four, dated October third, is received into and made part of the record. This is a request for Mayor and Council to consider approving a marijuana dispensary as a special exception land use. The site is located at thirty-nine oh six North Oracle Road, south of the intersection of North Oracle and West Roger, in a C two zone. Is the applicant or representative, representative present at this time?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Brian Underwood with the Planning Center, and we are in agreement with the conditions as part of the special exception.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Clerk, you are requested to read ordinance one-two-zero-four-three by number and title only.
Ordinance Number one-two-zero-four-three relating to zoning, a special exception land use marijuana dispensary TP ENT zero-six-two-three-zero-two-eight, Oracle Dispensary, North Oracle Road, located at thirty-nine oh six North Oracle Road, approximately five hundred feet south of the intersection on North Oracle Road and West Roger Road, approving with conditions the construction of a marijuana dispensary zone in the C two zone and setting an effective date.
What is the council's pleasure?
Madam Mayor, I move we adopt ordinance Number one-two-zero-four-three.
There is a motion? There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this item?
May I say a few words?
Yes, Mr. Councilmember Dahl.
I just want to thank Mr. Underwood and the applicant for working through, there were some protests. They were kind of minor protests, and what really bothered me were the ideological protests that, hey, people shouldn't smoke marijuana, so we shouldn't have another dispensary. That's kind of ridiculous. But there are some neighbors, we're going to put in some more, you guys decided to put in some more trees and support the tree effort. Shade for the potential idling line. Great working with you. Congratulations. I'm so happy to have you in Ward three.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dahl. Let's go to roll call.
Mr. Dahl?
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham?
Aye.
Mr. Kazachik?
Aye.
Mr. Feimbris?
Aye.
Mayor Romero?
Aye.
Ordinance one-two-zero-four-three passes by a vote of five-zero. Item ten. Economic Initiatives, Approval of Primary Jobs Incentive Development Agreement with Microstar Logistics LLC, Resolution Number two-three-six-eight-zero.
Ms. City Manager's Communication Number three-one-three, dated October third, is received into and made part of the record. Ms. Clerk, you are requested to read Resolution two-three-six-eight-zero by number and title only.
Resolution Number two-three-six-eight-zero relating to economic development incentives authorizing and approving the primary jobs incentive development agreement between the City of Tucson, the city, and Microstar Logistics LLC in Ward four for their proposed development of a hundred and fifty thousand square foot industrial facility.
What is the council's pleasure?
Madam Mayor, in the absence of our colleague, I move that we adopt Resolution two-three-six-eight-zero.
There is a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this item? Hearing none. Let's go to roll call.
Mr. Kazachik? Mr. Dahl? Mr. Cunningham? Absent, excused. Mr. Feimbris?
Aye.
Mayor Romero?
Aye.
Resolution two-three-six-eight-zero passes by a vote of four-zero. Item eleven. Your Honor, item eleven has been continued to a future meeting.
All righty, thank you. Item twelve.
Adjournment.
Council will stand adjourned. The next regularly scheduled meeting will be on Tuesday, October seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, at or after five-thirty PM. Thank you all so much for your work. Have a wonderful rest of your week.